All right, we're gonna get started in the next minute or two. And Emma Wade, if anyone's missing from the 10 U and 12 U teams, we have some other things we can do first, but we're gonna get started in just a moment, please. If everyone could make sure, I know you girls might have some cell phones, can you make sure they're silenced, because every once in a while, these guys, their phones go off and it's kinda... The hour being 6:30 PM on Monday, September 26, 2022, I'd like to call to order the Brookfield Village Board Meeting. Would everyone please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bridget, can we do a roll call, please?
Trustee Ketchmark?
Here.
Trustee Cote?
Here.
Trustee Hendricks?
Here.
Trustee Conroy?
Here.
Trustee Leclair?
Here.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Here.
And President Garvey?
Here.
Thank you. We have several items under appointments and presentations. The first is, we're gonna swear in Phil Richards to agree to serve on our Economic Development Commission. We've already voted on, he was approved, but Phil, if you could come up and be sworn in. And Phil, I gotta tell you, the other members who were sworn in did not have this big of a crowd coming to their swearing. But, I mean, the Police and Fire Commission thinks it's for them, so I don't know. So if you come up in front of Clerk Weber, she will swear you in.
Nice. Okay. Are you ready?
Aye, Phil Richard.
Aye, Phil Richard.
Having been appointed to the office of?
Having been appointed to the office of?
Economic Development Commission.
Economic Development Commission.
In the village of Brookfield.
In the village of Brookfield.
In the county of Cook.
The county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of?
I will faithfully discharge the duties of?
The Office of Economic Development Commission Member.
The Office of Economic Development Commission Member.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Phil, for those of you who don't know, is the President of First National Bank of Brookfield, and he has agreed to serve on an Economic Development Commission. We just started to help new and existing businesses improve and expand, and he's one of the busiest people in town, but he's agreed to do it. And First National Bank has always been a great sponsor of Brookfield Little League. In fact, when I was a 12-year-old, he sponsored our team, their bank sponsored our team, and I know... Actually, he was my coach. No. But thank you for your agreeing to serve, we really appreciate it.
I love the scoreboard, keep track of winners.
Yes. They do donate the scoreboards also, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. The next three items are reappointments to our Police and Fire Commissioners. So the first, I'd entertain a motion to reappoint CP Hall II to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Trustee Conroy, second by Trustee Ketchmark. Any questions or comments on the appointment? Okay, hearing done, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Cote?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Conroy?
Aye.
Trustee Leclair?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And we're gonna swear in all three of these if they are approved all at the same time. The next item, I'd entertain a motion to reappoint P. Edward Berman to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Trustee Cote, second by Trustee Leclair. Any questions or comments on the reappointment? Okay, hearing done, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Cote?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Conroy?
Aye.
Trustee Leclair?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Gentlemen, if you could please come up to the village clerk and be sworn in. Just for our people, the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, these people, again, they are volunteers, they are very experienced community members, they interview and help when we need to hire new police and firefighters, they do the background checks, the interviews, and they make recommendations to the chiefs about who we should hire for the Police and Fire Department. They spend a lot of time and effort, and it's a very important job, so thank you for agreeing to serve, and now Clerk Weber will swear you in.
Are you ready?
Aye.
Aye. Tim Heilenbach.
Having been appointed to the office of?
Having been appointed to the office of?
Fire and Police Commission.
Fire and Police Commission.
In the village of Brookfield.
In the village of Brookfield.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of?
The duties of the Office of?
Fire and Police Commissioner.
Fire and Police Commissioner.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Again, thank you for your service, we appreciate it, you guys do a great job.
There you go. Thank you. I'm just sitting right here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, do we, both teams, we have everyone that we're expecting, or I could wait a few more minutes, or?
Do you have everyone we're expecting?
Okay.
Who's not here?
You know, we'll read their names, and then I'll give the certificates to the managers who can give them. We want to read everybody's names, so... So what we're gonna do now is, we're gonna honor, we have two great groups of young women here tonight that accomplished a lot this summer, and we wanted to bring them into the village board meeting and recognize them. So we're gonna, first, we're gonna honor the 10 U All-Stars, and we're gonna, in a few moments, call them up individually. Trustee Leclair, who's very familiar with the Little League and girls softball, is gonna help me out. We have individual certificates for each lady and each of the coaches and managers, and I'm gonna ask you to come up in a few minutes individually, and I'll give you your certificate. Any family members that wanna come up and take individual pictures can do that, just please come up as close as you want. But we'll ask, after I give you your certificate, ladies, if you could stay up here, maybe just face the audience, and then, once we get the whole team up here, we wanna get a team shot and everything, so... The first group that we're honoring is the 10 U 2022 Little League All-Star District Champions and Third Place State Winners. These young ladies had quite a summer. These are the All-Stars from all the teams in Brookfield at the 10 U level, so these are the best of the best, and they might have played on different teams during the regular season, but they all came together for All-Stars and made it all the way. Winning a district title is a big deal here. If you look out at Overhold Field, the flags that you see lining the field during tournament time, those are mostly district flags and beyond, when a team from Brookfield wins the district title, they get a flag and they get to bring it back, and there's flags flying from years ago and decades ago out there, and it's been a little while since we had some of this, but, you know, we have two teams here tonight, but this particular team, the 10 U girls, had quite a season, and they went 3-0 in the district section to win the District Nine title, and they beat LaGrange 4-2 in the title game, and then they got to play in the state tournament, which was really nice, because the 10 U tournament was hosted at our own Danny Hall Field over at Eller Park. And I'm gonna give a bonus prize to, who knows what, who knows who Danny Hall was? Anybody? Girls on the team. Oh, come on, there's a sucker at stake here. Dave, do you know who Danny Hall was?
I do.
Who was Danny Hall?
He coached the 1985 World Series Champions that were from Brookfield.
The girls softball team from 1985 that won the Little League World Series. He was a, he was a police officer here in town, he was a business owner, and he was the manager of that team that won the entire thing, the whole ball of wax, back in 1985. And we named that field after him for what he had done for the village of Brookfield. He passed away a couple of years ago, and he was, he was a great guy and a great manager, but you guys got to play on that field that was named after him and his honor, so... And I know you guys came really close to making it all the way, we're very, very proud of you, and I know a lot of you guys have been playing together for a long time, and you're still young, and you've got some more, some more years to go, so we just wanted to congratulate you in front of the whole village, there's some people watching you on TV maybe tonight or on the internet, so we're gonna, Trustee Leclair's gonna come down with me, he's gonna call out your individual names and have you come down, so... We want to read what individual certificate, silence, Dave.
The village of Brookfield Board of Trustees congratulates and commends Emma Beatty, 10 U, 2022 Little League All-Star, 3rd place State Winner. Next up is Grace Campbell.
Grace, basketball trials, maybe?
Yes.
Josie Swanson.
A lot of these girls are multi-sport athletes, and a lot of our basketball trials tonight, so they couldn't be here, but we wanted to read their names, honor them, and make sure they have their certificates.
Justina Costello.
Come up as far as you want, if you can.
Oh, there you go, big timer.
Manager Michael Melendez.
Coach Eddie Campbell. And Coach Brad Hickey.
We'll get a picture in a second, I want, Mike, you wanna say a few words about the team, maybe?
Sure. First, I wanna thank the village for recognizing this group of hard-working young ladies. This is a combination of a lot of hard work, and I know the tournament was this summer, but these girls started putting in the work last fall. We were fortunate enough to, many of these girls, some of the 12 U and some of the girls on the 10 U, won last year's 10 U District Nine title. Weren't as competitive as we'd have liked in state, so we put in the work to try to be more competitive this year. And so, as you see, we have a large coaching staff, I think they, you know, the time and energy they put in to work with the girls, the girls themselves putting in on the effort, the support of the families, not just of the players, but of the community. Having it at home this year was fantastic. We had a number, I mean, it was a packed house every, every time, and we felt the support, support from the village, parks and recs, it's just, it's a total team effort, and we really appreciate this recognition, and we look forward to even greater things in the future. So, thank you again for having us tonight.
I will come on in for a senior.
Me and the coaches getting back.
Well, some of them are taller than us.
This is a summer they will never forget, and we hope to have you guys back next year.
That's the plan.
Okay, next, we, it's been a, like I said, it's been a great summer for Brookfield Little League and the girls softball program. At the same time, while this was going on, the 12 U girls were competing, and they also won the district title and got to go all the way to the state, and I think, am I correct, both teams lost to the team that eventually won the state title? Is that true for the 10 U and 12 U, or?
No, not at all.
Okay, okay. But it was a great, it was a great season. I was able to make one of the 12 U games, I tried to make the 10 U game, but it was on the, it was in Michigan, but I was following closely, but the 12 U, I was able to make the one, the game against River Forest that went into extra innings. You guys were down and you came back, tied it, went into extra innings, and I don't think, I've attended a lot of games in my life watching my own kids play, but I was so nervous that night. And you guys pulled out a great win over River Forest, and, and I, I knew some people from River Forest, because my wife teaches in River Forest, and, you know, one of the things that gave me a lot of pride was, not just that you won and the way you won, but I recognized some parents from River Forest that knew my wife, and they talked about the sportsmanship and class that our girls, coaches, and fans all exhibited during that tournament, and as your village president and just a Brookfield resident, made me very proud. So we now wanna honor the 12 U team for winning the District Nine title and also finishing third in the state, and their flag will be flying out there also. So Trustee Leclair?
Do you wanna say a few words, or? Sure. So, this team, group of these girls, won the district last year and went to state, and it was rough. The grades were in, they really loved the pool, but the tournament itself was less something to be desired, and I would say, the fight in this group, and if you spend a lot of time with 12-year-old girls, you know the fight, but they aimed it very much at the target of getting to state. And coming into this year, for both teams, it's been, we haven't figured out exactly when the last state game was won, but it's been more than a decade since a team won a game at the state level. And so, after that first game, we like really, it was very exciting, we felt like we had really made it, and that it put a lot of pressure on like the other teams. And so, we, you know, these girls, you were at the game, it was great, we had, we were in River Forest for our games for the state, and we had just droves of people. I mean, if you know this group, this group travels real heavy, they travel like a Big Ten team. I mean, they just really, we saw the principal, the assistant principal, from Essie Gross, were out there to cheer the girls on. Mike came, we had, you know, just families, and we livestreamed the game so people could see them from all over. Just the amount of support these girls have gotten in the last two years from all over, the girls themselves, really, you know, the sportsmanship of when we did lose the last game to Beardstown, they ultimately won the state. They won the state last year, their team went to regional last year and this year. Almost every one of these girls continue to watch Beardstown at the regional level, and really, you know, compare themselves, like, we know we did better than some of the teams they played there. And so, and really, just in a supportive way. So I think, you know, as a manager, as a mom, it's great to see them really pushing the other girls forward, and not just it being about them. So nine, 11 of our 14 girls are eligible next year, if they come back to Little League, so we really like, but it's a, I know, we had, three of the girls will have age challenges, but the other 11 will be eligible. And so, I feel like it's no longer, the goal is no longer to win a state game, it's to win the state title and go to Indianapolis. So, we've got, there's a lot of work to do between now and then, but if anybody's up for it, it's this crew, so it's been exciting.
Why don't you move a step forward a little bit, although, again, we understand why you're so small.
I mean, that was a little, maybe we'll take your eyes.
Everybody come forward as close as you want, there'll be available autographs back for us, too, right?
And I just, I just want to make a quick announcement because while we're on Little League and topics, today is Mrs. Overholt's 95th birthday. So happy birthday to Mrs. Overholt, if you're watching. Okay, we're going to try and move on now. At this point in the meeting, I'm going to open up to public comment. Is there anyone on my right side that would like to make any public comment? Hearing none. Is there anybody on my left side that would like to make any public comment? Okay, hearing no public comment, I'll move on to reports of special committees. Trustee Cote, please.
I would like to make a motion to approve corporate warrant dated September 26, 2022 in the amount of $1,115,443.50.
Second.
Motion was made by trustee Cote, second by trustee Kaluzny. Are there any highlights you want to point out, trustee Cote?
Nothing to note on this one.
Do any board members have any questions or comments about any items on the warrant? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Cote?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Conroy?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Regards to DPW, they've been very busy recently. They were invited to the farmer's market recently where they brought in heavy equipment to allow a residence to climb all over, which is very thankful for. That was very fun. They also continued their LED updates, fixing the lights and putting out LED lights in Eller, at the Eller Field, where they also, there was a contract to replace one of the fences, one of the backstops, pardon me. And all the planned stump removals for the year have been completed. In regards to the library, the library meeting will be this coming Wednesday, but I did want to point out that the library has extended their paver program, and they are set to install the pavers come March of 2023. There are also other opportunities to sponsor bench or trees. Please visit the library's website and click on Donate for more information. I would like to mention also, September is Suicide Prevention Month. If you or someone you know is struggling in need of help, please dial 988 or you can text 838-255. PTSD is very real. If you are struggling, I understand. You don't have to be alone. It is estimated that we lose 22 vets a day to suicide, which over 60% of them are over the age of 50. We have combined with a vet center, we have pamphlets for veterans to, from the vet center, from Forest Park, to help you, guide you through things. But the VA also has a national coaching and daycare program where you can talk to a licensed psychologist or social worker by phone. To speak with a VA coach, it'd be 888-823-7458, Monday through Friday. If you are on the verge of losing your home and you are a veteran, or you know some, a veteran who is on the verge of losing their home, please have them call 877-424-3838. Brookfield has also offered a session with Hope for the Day to help educate village staff. Hope for the Day will provide us with an entry-level education program for peer-to-peer proactive suicide prevention, providing language and tools to take action on our personal mental health and be supportive of our peers in our work areas. Brookfield is also offering for the public, mental health first aid classes. These are for adults to take, but there is one class for mental health first aid for adults, and there's another one for mental health first aid for youth. The youth one is on 10:05 and 10:06, from 5, from 5 to 9:00 PM. And then the one for adults is on 11:12, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They can be found on our Village Course website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Cote. Trustee Conroy, Chamber of Commerce, please.
Yeah, so Chamber's been busy, a lot going on. Summer may be over, but the farmer's market is not, so please feel free to come by. Saturday's Village Hall parking lot from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. As far as 60 to Win, the drawing is now taking place on Thursdays. It is also serving as the business after hours. So those will be held Thursdays at 4:30 at Joe's Saloon. Art Fest was held here at Kiwanis the Saturday before last. I'd like to thank Abby Brennan and her team for putting that together. There were over 40 different artists selling their crafts, as well as food, live music. Imperial Oak was there. So great turnout. I stopped by and some great art on display. The chalk drawings were amazing. So again, thank you to Abby for making that happen for us, and it was a great event. This past Saturday, we had three separate ribbon cuttings, a great turnout for all of them. Thank you for everybody that came out from the village and from the village board. First was Vines and Vinyl on Prairie. Then next door to them was Warm Wick Soy Candles, and then Good Times Barber Shop at the old Harps Building right there at the Circle. So three very excited owners, very happy to be in business. All three of them actually raved about the support they had from the village. The inspection process, all went smooth. I mean, that, it was positive comments throughout. So appreciate the support of the business community and the incoming businesses and making this a good place for them to set out. And then one more event coming up. It's a new event, October 1st, Dancing with the Chamber, or Dancing with Brookfield Best. I've heard a couple of different names there. That is going to be held this coming Saturday from, on October 1st, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Riverside Brookfield Auditorium. Tickets are still available for that. There's a number of different dancers. Early word is that Dr. Freitas is the early favorite. Chuck Hitzman is not. So it should be a fun night. There are tickets available, so if you're not doing anything Saturday, it should be a fun evening from 7:00 to 9:00 at Arby Fieldhouse. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Conroy. Trustee Hendricks, planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning commission met this past Thursday. They heard two cases, both of which were approved, so will be coming to the committee of the whole in October. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Hendricks. Trustee Ketchmark, administration, economic development.
Two items. The Economic Development Commission met this past Wednesday. Much of the discussion centered on the village's strategic plan that this board had worked on, and the SWOT analysis that we had put together. They began discussions of Goal One of our economic development plan, and then some initial discussions identifying the commission's priorities going forward, which will be the top agenda item for their next meeting. Also pleased to announce that October 29th, the Brookfield Historical Society and the Brookfield Chamber of Commerce will once again sponsor the 23rd Annual Monsters on Main Street. This will be trick-or-treating in the Broadway and Grand Boulevard business districts. Once again, this year, it will be at Gross School on the playground. Looks like our bridge is getting closer and closer, but we have to plan ahead of it a little bit, and so much of the activity would take place at the old train station. That, once again, this year, will be at Gross School. Stay tuned for additional details on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Ketchmark. Trustee Leclerc, Parks and Recreation, please. Yes, we just finished up Saturday, a great Music on Grand. At the end, we had a little, little bit of drizzle, I think sent a few people away, but I think everybody, there were a lot of positive comments. My wife and I were out there. It was a really good evening. The music was great. Also, our new Parks and Recreation Foundation is having a fundraiser, November 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Imperial Oak. And there's $25 a ticket. Trustee Conroy has, I think, you're going to purchase a 10, table of 10, I think. No, there's $25 a ticket if anyone needs them. Julie Narumatsu's in the, in the back there. I think maybe Stevie might be able to get them, or myself, so let us know. Our next meeting is October 18th, 6:30, right here in the courtroom. And that ends my report. Thank you, trustee Leclerc. Trustee Kaluzny, Conservation and Beautification?
Yes, that Conservation Commission just is coming off of our Meet the Creek Weekend. We held that on the 24th, along with a ribbon cutting with village staff and the board. So it was really great. Everyone was very excited about the new canoe launch, a surprising number of people that hadn't seen it yet, or ridden ever in a kayak or canoe. So huge thanks to Troop 90 for making sure everyone was safe in their kayaks and canoes, and no one fell in the water the entire time. So it was a really great event. We had a number of nature crafts and scavenger hunt, and all sorts of really cool fish that were caught right out of Salt Creek earlier that day. So it was pretty cool to see all of that nature and see that new amenity energized for the day. So thanks for everyone that helped out with that event. It was really great. The Conservation Commission's next meeting is tomorrow night at 6:30 PM here in Village Hall. And then the Beautification Commission is meeting again here, coming up on October 11th at 6 o'clock as their next meeting, but they're also working on Project Nice, Fall Project Nice, which is October 15th at 8:30 AM here at Village Hall. And so they're putting the finishing touches on that. I know coordinating a lot with Public Works, so thank you, Public Works team, for all of that. And they're going to be switching out some plants from the planters on Grant to some fall decor and some other fun fall items around the Grand Boulevard district. So thank you again to the Beautification Commission for that. And that ends my report.
Thank you, trustee Kaluzny. Just briefly, my report, Solid Waste Agency and the WCMC have not met since our last meeting. The WCMC had their annual dinner this past Friday, was not able to attend due to a conflict, but, and staff has continued to meet with Brookfield Zoo on some opportunities where we might be able to pair up together for mutual benefit. And as trustee Ketchmark pointed out, the Economic Development Commission is in full swing. I was able to attend part of the meeting, and it, I really appreciate all the dedication and energy that group brings and the thoughtfulness, and it was a very exciting meeting. And I also just wanted to add on to trustee Conroy's comments about the ribbon cuttings. It was a very exciting Saturday morning. I want to thank staff, Tim was out, Emily was out, and having staff there, and I heard the same compliments about how great village staff has been in helping them, and just the energy that was there. The thing, one of the things that really impressed me, the other business owners that came out to congratulate and attend the ribbon cuttings. Annette from Fill My Jar came down, and she brought actually a gift basket to each one. She came down to the barber shop. Juan from Beach Avenue Barbecue was there, and I know there were other business owners. So it's business owners supporting business owners, and it was just, I know myself and the other board members there were just energized by the whole thing. It was a great morning, a lot of ribbon got cut, and three very exciting new businesses are in town, and they've already done a good job in getting the word out, but we just got to keep patronizing them and, you know, getting the word out about them. So it was, it was a really good Saturday, which was again topped off by the Music on Grand Boulevard with a tremendous crowd. And I want to thank Stevie, she's ready to kill me because I thanked her publicly up on stage and brought her up on stage, but it was a great summer. We were a victim of our own success. We had some great nights of that, and everybody wants us to do it more and more, but let's just enjoy what we did do. The businesses, walking around that night, talking to the businesses, they said what a great summer it was, and just seeing so many people enjoy themselves on top of the other events that we did. So it's kind of sad to say, you know, that's the last one of the summer, and summer's kind of ending, but I know we have things planned for the coming months also. So Stevie, thank you for all you did all summer, and all the staff, Public Works setting up, everyone, the police out there, making sure everyone was safe. And again, it's just seeing staff out there and, you know, visiting with people and talking to people, it's, it's a lot of, another source of pride for the village board, so thank you. That ends the reports of special committees. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to pass the Omnibus Agenda. So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by trustee Ketchmark, second by trustee Hendricks. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Cote?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Conroy?
Aye.
Trustee Leclerc?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. We have two items under Regular Business. The first is I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution for the furnishing of professional design engineering services for the 2023 water main replacement project with Edwin Hancock Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by trustee Kaluzny, second by trustee Leclerc. Any questions or comments on the resolution? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Cote?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Conroy?
Aye.
Trustee Leclerc?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then the last item under Regular Business, I'd entertain a motion to pass an ordinance to approve changes in parking restrictions at Grant and Prairie avenues.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by trustee Kaluzny, second by trustee Cote. This came up in the course of us talking about the construction and the redesign of that intersection and area to make it safer. These were the changes recommended by board and staff. Any questions or comments?
President Garvey, so when does this go into effect? I ask that because part of it is going to be changing, change in the B decals? There are additional decals we have to get out?
Good evening, everyone. To your point, trustee Ketchmark, yes, we'd have, we have to, well, potentially by removing the parking on Prairie, those residents can now essentially...
So they should have their B decals already?
Yes. So if there's any one additional, and on the south side of the street, that was also B decal, as well as Prairie up to Lincoln and Prairie all the way down to Brookfield Avenue. So we would presume that it's going to be typically the same resident parkers that are going to probably just be shifting from Prairie onto Grant.
But, I mean, you work together with Doug, Doug would be the one handling?
Yes, I mean, as far as I know, the changes, I mean, there's not going to be any changes to the actual vehicle itself. So...
Okay, other than if there were some that were parking on Grant?
Yeah, they can now move to Grant. And that restriction's only from 7:00 to 9:00 AM, Monday through Friday.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And that's a good point, trustee Garvey. I know the police department will work with Doug, and, you know, in terms of gradual, you know, enforcement and, you know, getting it straightened out first so everyone's aware of it, so. All right, other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Cote?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Conroy?
Aye.
Trustee Leclerc?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. That ends the items we have under Regular Business. Tim, manager's report, please.
Thank you, President Garvey. As usual, you get all the accolades with the fun baseball things, and I get to speak about rodents, so that's kind of the way it goes for those managers. In all seriousness, we have received several complaints about rats, primarily south of Ogden, perhaps coming around Eller Park, but in that general neighborhood. I will tell you that staff has diligently driven the area, reviewed the area, inspected properties. We cannot find and identify any one source. However, our property maintenance inspector has identified several properties that may be in various states of violation of property maintenance codes. The danger there is when there's garbage, when there's trash in the backyard, that's where these rodents like to burrow and live. So we are doing several things to try to mitigate the problem as much as possible. I will say and just clarify that this is a really hard issue. Most communities do not have a rat control program per se. Some communities do limited things in business districts. Oftentimes, the source of rats is grease traps and dumpsters from restaurants. We have looked, we have scoured behind all of the Ogden...
Some communities do limited things in business districts. Oftentimes, the source of rats is grease traps and dumpsters from restaurants. We have looked, we have scoured behind all of the Ogden Avenue restaurants, have not found an obvious area where that would be taking place. I think it's because of that that most communities have found that it's, it's really difficult to try to establish a comprehensive program, but we are going to do several things to try to mitigate the effects of rats. And those things are as follows. This week, I believe our property maintenance inspector is going to meet with the county. Cook County in and of itself does not offer a program, but they have resources that they can turn us on to, consultants that they would recommend that we use. We will meet with them, have an understanding of what they can do, what their capabilities are, and we may come back to the board at the budget workshop probably in early November and discuss perhaps budgeting that we may want to include in the fiscal 23 budget to start a, a more comprehensive program. Second of all, as I've already said, we are, we're, I haven't said this yet, we're putting together a communication piece of what homeowners can do in terms of keeping their properties free from debris, free of tall grass, eliminate places where these rodents like to burrow. We're going to put that information on social media sites. We're going to put it in our next newsletter that comes out this fall. When our property maintenance inspector is issuing a violation to a property specifically in this area, specifically related to these type of property maintenance complaints, they will not only get the notice of complaint or the notice of violation, they will also get this communication piece in hopes that they will clean up their properties. That's really it. If, if any resident or business has any question, they can certainly give me a call. We are going to get this information out as soon as we have it gathered, but I don't want to make any promises that will be a pipe-piper that's going to lead all these rats out of town. We're going to do what we can and what's reasonable.
And I want to thank, there were some residents that brought this to our attention. I mean, we, you know, probably every year we get a few complaints, but it seemed to be more pronounced this year and with their assistance, we were able to observe the largest concentration was in a specific area along, you know, Ogden and basically south of the tracks. And, you know, in talking to some people in the county and other towns, I mean, I, there's some thought that they kind of start around, you know, the Splain's River in Ogden and then come down the Ogden Avenue corridor because in some towns, the businesses, their dumpsters, they're, they're looking for their food and they travel down and when they can't find things there, they fan out into residential neighborhoods. So, you know, Carl had, you know, at first there was some thought that maybe the dumpsters or the garbage cans, that we often store a lot of empty garbage cans over at Eller Park. Carl had a private firm come out and check Eller Park and found no signs of infestation and the Public Works facilities on the south side, there was no signs of anything there. So property maintenance did find some, you know, in the areas where there was high concentrations of reports that there were specific individual private property owners that had issues that showed signs of infestation and rats do multiply pretty quickly and we've, we've seen that. As Tim indicated, it's not an easy issue, there's no blanket solution. I mean, plant, putting rat poison and traps on village property and alleys is, is not a really safe or plausible solution at this time until you eliminate the source of the rats and, you know, their breeding grounds and the private property. You know, putting out rat poison can affect pets and can be a danger to residents and small children and without dealing with the source. So I think the strategy that we have is we're going to try and clean up the individual properties. And a lot of it's, you know, information that we've become aware of and in some of it's, you know, just common sense about wood piles and high grass and, you know, dog waste and animal waste and chicken, you know, chicken coops and things are attractive feeding grounds for the, for rats. And, you know, also, you know, people don't hear about bird feeders and things, they will eat just about anything. So we feel like we're making some progress already. Staff's going to share the information, I think it'll be in the next Brookfield. They will share it through social media and the individual property owners. And after the meeting with county, if we have more information, we'll go from there, so. Anything else, Tim?
That's it.
Okay. All right, that ends the items we have on the village board agenda. At 7:23 PM, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the village board meeting.
So moved, second.
Motion was made by trustee Claire, second by trustee Cote. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Cote?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Conroy?
Aye.
Trustee Leclerc?
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The village board meeting's.